Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Stanley County Board of Commissioners. This is the third day of August, 7:00 PM. I'll ask Commissioner Efer to lead us in invocation.
Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we humbly come to you tonight, once again thanking you for the many blessings. Lord, I pray a special blessing for those who have traveled this way today, Lord, and I pray for our commissioners that we make decisions for our county. I pray, Lord, for our firemen, our police, our EMS workers, for the job they do to protect and service every day. Lord, I pray for the firemen in California fighting the wildfires, just be with them and keep them safe, especially our military and their families for the ultimate sacrifices they make to keep us one nation under God. These things I ask in your precious name, I pray. Amen. If you would, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and a people with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Efer. You had the agenda before you, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I would like to move the consent agenda to, make a motion to move the consent agenda to item five and put the Innovate North Carolina Grants submission as item four.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no, the motion carries. Our first item is our Tax Collector's Annual Settlement for fiscal year 2014-15. Mr. Clinton Swearingen, Tax Administrator, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, other members of the board. I am here tonight to present the Tax Collector's Annual Settlement for fiscal year 1415 as required by North Carolina General Statute 105-373. I'm here to provide an overview for all the collections activities that we took place in that year. The real and personal property collection rate excluding registered motor vehicles was 96.54 percent for the year. The collection rate for registered motor vehicles was 93.58 percent yielding an overall collection rate of 96.54. This is an increase from last fiscal year, which had a collection rate of 95.71, which is a .83 percent increase from last year. In your handout that I, each of you should have, the first is the analysis of the countywide levy. You'll see those numbers reflected at the bottom, the 96.54 percent. You'll notice the registered motor vehicles is 93.58 and it's a really small amount. That's because the last registered motor vehicle bill that came through our system was October of 2014. The North Carolina Tax and Tag Program started October of 13, but it took a full year to cycle everybody out and get them on the new program. So that's why that's such a small amount, because we didn't collect anything past October of 14 for motor vehicles. The next page is the annual audit report that we prepare each month. This is the year end and it once again reflects the 96.54 percent. The next page is the delinquent collections report, basically tells how much we've collected for all the back taxes owing in our system. We had a decrease, if you took everything that was owing minus the current year of $3.38 million, it went down to $2.188 million. So, we decreased that amount by about 1.2 million in addition to what we collected for that current fiscal year. The next page is the settlement information. It's three record groups of reports that we run to balance each other out, and you can see that total uncollected, real and personal, and what little bit of motor vehicles we had totals $916,000. To members of the board, maybe we're not here last year, that number was $1,150,000 last year. So, almost $200,000, a little over $200,000 less owing that we've collected. And then finally is the affidavit saying, "I've done everything in my power to collect this debt," and finally is the last order is to charge me with the new 2015-16 taxes that just came out. So, I respectfully request that the board accept and approve this annual settlement report and also charge the tax collector with collecting the fiscal year 2015-16 taxes. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have, but before I do, I do want to thank each one of my employees for their hard work. This all deals with collections and I have some fine staff in the collector's office, but if it's not mapped and it's not valued and assessed, then we can never collect on it. So I just want to publicly thank my employees for doing a wonderful job, because they do that each and every day, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does anyone have any questions? It appears not, and thank you for the gratitude you showed the employees. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion that we approve. Annual report and charge the collector with collecting the taxes for the fiscal year.
Can I second it?
We have a motion by Commissioner McIntyre and a second by Commissioner Shudo. Any discussion?
Just want to say it was a good report.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no, the motion carries. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members.
Clint, I appreciate that little postcard I got in the mail over the weekend, too. Thank you.
You're welcome. He's your citizen of our county.
Our next presenter is Sheriff Burris, and he has some award presentations.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow board members. Come to you tonight to, like Clint did, brag on a couple awesome personnel that we have with the sheriff's office that gives you, the board, outstanding leadership guidance and a very, very job well done. Every day they work. The two will be honored tonight is Captain Brian Hatley and Chief Carla King. And the two awards I'm going to mention about and say right here in front of the microphone, one is the Intermediate Service Award, which is minimum 15 years of service, which is a very high honor. And the second will be the Advanced Certificate, that is the highest honor you can get in law enforcement throughout the state. To have these two receive this award from the standard commission is a very high honor, and I'm very proud of them and all they do daily for not only myself, for you, but the great citizens of Stanley County. Now this time I'd ask Captain Hatley to come forward.
Captain Hatley, this is from the North Carolina Sheriff's Education Training Standards Commission and recognition of completion of 18.10 years of service of dedicated law enforcement to the citizens of Stanley County and to the great personnel of North Carolina. The Attorney General and Chairman and members of North Carolina Sheriff's Association and Training Standards Commission hereby award this to you, the Intermediate Service Award. I just want to say congratulations.
Thank you.
And also Captain Hatley, I'd like to present you with the State of North Carolina Department of Justice, North Carolina Sheriff's Education Training Standards Commission with the Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate. It says, "By virtue of authority vested and by laws of state recognition of attendance and training and education of judges, the man is in the role of professional law enforcement officer and a personal devotion and service to people of North Carolina. The Attorney General and Chairman and members of North Carolina Sheriff's Association and Training Standards Commission, through their authority, vouchs me in giving you this Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate. Congratulations."
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to call up my Chief Deputy, Carla King. And every time somebody with the sheriff's office achieves these great goals, I always want to come before the board and before the citizens, because a lot of times law enforcement, public safety, MS, fire are taken for granted. It's a very thankless job, but when you work with these folks daily and you see the honor and integrity they have for their profession and for their county, it is truly a blessing to have them, and I think we're all very fortunate to have such wonderful captains and staff and a chief deputy that cares so much about you and myself and all the citizens of our great county.
Chief King, this is Department of Justice, Intermediate Service Award and its recognition of completion of 16 years of service of dedicated law enforcement to and demonstrated ability to perform both tasks required by a law enforcement officer and a personal devotion to the people of North Carolina. Attorney General and Chairman and members of North Carolina Sheriff's Association and Training Standards hereby award a very impressive award to you. I just want to say I'm very proud and very honored to present this to you, Captain. And your thanks, I'm not going to read all that again, but I just want to say as far as being a sheriff, you're a wonderful chief deputy. Every day you come to work, you show professionalism, you show dedication, you show devotion, and I commend you for that. And it's not always easy, and everything doesn't always go our way, but you always keep your chin up and smiling and doing a great job for myself, for our personnel, this board, and I mean that to you and I do appreciate it.
And let me say to Captain Hatley and Chief King, that's over 24 years' service to Stanley County, and on behalf of the board, we thank you sincerely. Our next item is the Detention Center Rear Gate Security Camera, and our presenter is Captain Bradford.
Members of the board, we're here tonight to discuss any questions or anything about the rear gate camera system that will be in between the sheriff's office and the detention center. And what this is, in a nutshell, is Master Control now has power to unlock the front doors, the big gates for personnel to come in, whether it's from another agency, our agi, or a state agency. They come up, there's a visible camera, Master Control sees the person, they acknowledge the person with their name and agency, they're logged in, they can open the door. The problem we're having now is just strictly a security issue. The rear gate does not have anything like this. You punch in a few numbers and you can go in. There's no way of knowing who it is, there's no way of knowing when they leave, and with all the multiple vehicles and access to the back of the detention center. As far as security goes, Captain Bradford's done a lot of research on this, done a fantastic job working with a local company to do this work and keep the business in Stanley County. I think you've got the paperwork for the addition, and we recommend that as far as safety and security for the public and detention center and sheriff's office equipment that we install this camera system.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
My question is currently they have a key code that they punch in?
Yes.
And how, when's the last time that key code's been changed?
Never been changed, as far as we know. It's been the same since we've came in. And the thing is, all personnel that's worked there, worked with a vendor, worked with food service, or any past employee has that code. If we change and do another code, then we're going to have to email it out, call it out, and they're going to hear about it by word of mouth or whatever.
But, but I was wondering why you hadn't changed the code if it was a big security concern?
Because if we change the code, I'm going to have to email all the same code out to everybody already, and it's going to have to go through word of mouth again. It kind of defeats the purpose. I'll let Captain Bradford elaborate on it.
Commissioner, the issue is that if you change the key code, we have Waste Management who comes in, we have vendors who came in for deliveries, when they come to work on the heating system, things of that nature. If they don't have the code, they can't get in, and we don't have the staff to man that gate, go out and let them come in and go out. The objective here is to monitor the traffic coming through. You're gracious enough to give us the money to buy equipment, and we've got a store back there. The last thing we want to happen is somebody to break something or steal something from us. And the other thing is the kitchen door is right there with inmates at all times. So if we change the code, we'll have to give it out, and it won't take long till everybody has it anyway.
Captain Bradford, what's the average daily traffic count? I know it's going to change up and down, but what, how many folks are you talking about coming in and out of that gate daily?
We'll have Waste Management comes a couple times a day. We generate a lot of trash. They come a few times a week. US Foods comes. Jerry and the maintenance are in and out all the time without accountability. We don't know who's coming or leaving. You have the deliveries from different vendors for the kitchen that comes, and we also have the Arrowmark, who's a contractor with the county. They come and go at leisure without any accountability. And the worst thing that could happen is we lose an inmate to one of these vendors and we don't know who came in.
Thanks, sir. Sheriff Burris, Captain Bradford, I'd just like to say I appreciate the job y'all are doing, because you guys are responsible for that detention center, and of course, we're ultimately responsible for what happens. And I think, you know, you guys have done a great job bringing this to our attention. I think it's something that needs to be addressed and it needs to be addressed soon. So I would like to make a motion to allocate the funds from the contingency to the budget for this security system.
Does anyone have any further questions? Okay. Is there a second to the question? Any discussion?
Yeah, it's a tough one for me. I know it's needed, but also just worried about the funding, because as you know, we gave y'all an extra $188,500 last year throughout the course of the last seven months to help your budget balance. And at the last meeting, you mentioned at the end that you're going to need more money for uniforms and boots, and Captain Bradford sent a list of other items needed at the jail. And I talked to Jerry Morton, I was talking to him, and he said one of the problems is you, you know, we're paying for stuff that was done years ago, because the contractor at the jail, I guess he cut corners here and there, and we're kind of paying the price for it there. And I'm just looking at some other requests from the sheriff's department. I think you guys, there was a request recently for a clothing allowance for the chief deputy and for the sheriff for $300 for six months, so that's the second time this year the request was made. And then, as far as understanding that there's some new stuff that's needed to be talking about, so, you know, I'm probably going to lean toward voting for this, but I would hope that you really watch the, watch the spending over there in the sheriff's department coming out. Because I know the last half of the, I'm looking forward to the last half of the year, and I just hope there's money left as we go through the budget year.
Well, to just put it blunt, and Commissioner Brolson has addressed this, and I spoke with several other folks, it's our job to do the best we can for you guys and for the county. It's our job to protect the citizens and protect all our equipment. We've got hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment sitting back there. We've got inmates coming out, taking trash out. We've got vendors coming in all the time. This lets correctional officers in the jail, let whoever's coming in, and they're notified, they know, they push a button, they gain access. It's strictly security. It's our job to find the problems, and it's our job to bring them to you and put them before you. Now it's off of us. We've located a security threat, we brought it before the board, we would appreciate it to get passed. It would be a definite plus, and hopefully the last thing we need in the detention center, because we have done a lot of upgrades and it's running a lot smoother.
I would certainly echo what Commissioner Shudo said. It seems like probably when the thing was constructed, there were some corners that were cut and some things that need to be buckled up, and I commend y'all for taking that upon yourselves and making that happen, because we certainly need to get that thing in correct order.
I can't argue with, Madam Chair, I can't argue with anything that's been said. I just think it's time for this board to quick, kind of macro-manage the sheriff's budget, and that's all it seems like you're trying to do. And the best that you can do for security doesn't always work, but if you can't see who's coming in and out, there's no telling who goes in and out, and I think it's time that we did something about this. Thank you.
Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor to approve the purchase of the rear gate security cameras, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Unanimous vote. Before you leave, Sheriff, I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Because you hear a lot of things and you never know what's true and what's not true. Has there been a problem with contraband entering the jail?
We have had some, a couple issues. We've straightened out the past few months, Madam Chair, where we've located contraband, we've charged inmates with felonies, and we've dealt with situations. Yes, ma'am.
Has it been marijuana, telephones, cocaine?
Yes.
All of this?
I know we've had marijuana in a lighter and a cellphone, and we have done searches, brought in my canines, located that, and then charged these inmates with felonies for bringing contraband in. The thing that's hurt us, and Captain Bradford's done an excellent job, and I'll be real brief with you, it's because I know y'all's time is valuable. We have weekenders come in, sometimes when they go to court, they don't have to serve a complete eight days in a row. The judge can allow them to come four weekends of two days. Well, those persons are putting drugs in them, on them, so when they come in for a search, they hadn't, you can't do a cavity search like that. We've already had to do one, we got a court order, we got the contraband in. Captain Bradford did that personally. So we have started segregating those inmates to single cells, so they will not bring the garbage into the facility. So we're doing our best to find this, but some of these guys are pretty, they got a lot of, lot of means to bring something in for other inmates. And I've actually had an inmate move this week, last week, just to prevent from some of these problems occurring.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff, that answers my question.
Yes, ma'am. Thank y'all.
Our next item is the Stanley County Rescue Squad Contingency Appropriation Request, and presenter is County Manager, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The board had set aside $15,000 in contingency funds in fiscal year 1516, specifically for the Stanley Rescue Squad. The funding was contingent on the development of a plan to enhance water rescue assets and resources. And Chief Robert Will Hoyt with the Stanley Rescue Squad is here this evening to address the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Manager Lucas, and board. What we're looking at for contingency is starting a dive team, and I think all y'all have the handout that we left. On the left-hand side is a price for what it takes to equip one diver to make one dive, whether it's in five feet of water or 75 feet of water. On the right column, we've got it broke down to one diver, two divers, three, four, and five. The four divers, you could, to do a dive, it's the minimum of four divers, because you got to have two in and two out for safety reasons. I have the fist set on here as an emergency backup set, because if we have an emergency situation and need the divers, and they get the gear out of the truck, and if one piece malfunctions, and it's mechanical and it will, at that time, without the fist set of gear, I will not be able to do the dive operation. So what we'd like to ask with this, if we could ask that y'all fund all five sets. I know it's a little more than what was set aside, but once I went and, and on these prices, that's not, I did not get the most expensive stuff, but I also didn't get the cheapest. I'm not going to let any of my divers go down with cheap dive gear. I want something that I know when they go down, it's going to last them. Because when you're on the bottom, you on your own. I mean, if something happens, you can't take your regulator out and get a suck of breath. So we need to buy the best we can to protect our people, but yet also be savvy in what we spend our money on.
Does anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure what I'm trying to ask. Do you already have some of these for?
We do have some, but they're 20-plus years old, so...
They wear out.
They wear out, and, you know, like I said, when you're on the water, you, you have to update on a regular basis, and there will be actually maintenance costs with this too associated. And this money here is just for equipment, that's not the certification to get people trained on it. That's $350 plus to, per diver, to get trained to do this. But all I've put in this budget is just the equipment we got to have to get started. Without the equipment, the class is really no, so...
I understand that you're a nonprofit, and could you elaborate on where your major, the major part of your funds comes from, please?
That is fundraisers. Mr. McIntyre, we get $10,000 from the county. Our insurance costs us $2,500 a quarter, so that's where the county money goes, just to pay our insurance. We are allotted $5,000 from the city of our borough. By the time we pay our light bill, the internet bill, phone bill, and the maintenance on the truck, I'm $2,500 in the hole. Last year, I believe it was right around $60,000 to keep the doors open, so we do that by fundraisers, picture takings, bass tournaments, whatever we have to do to make ends meet is what we have to do.
Do you receive any contribution from United Way?
We do, yes, ma'am. But that varies from year to year. I have to submit to them every year, and they just support on some equipment. And actually, this year, what I'm going to try to get with United Ways, the funding to pay to send the divers to class to get the certifications, I need to go along with this.
Did they fund you last year?
Yes, ma'am, they did.
Do you remember the amount?
$9,000, thereabouts, a little over. I know it was less than 10.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, tell me a little bit about, I guess, if you have a dive operation, what that situation may be like. Are you on, you know, a missing person?
It could be a missing person. It could be evidence search if the sheriff here had some stuff that needed recovery, he thought maybe in the lake, we could go out and look for it there. Primarily, it is missing persons in the water, but we have went out before and did evidence search, did some recoveries on vehicles that was running in the lake and stuff of that sort.
One other thing, if we were to consider the equipment for four or even three divers, then couldn't some of the older equipment, which you have, couldn't that be backup?
Some of, some of it could if the stuff we have can still get parts to service it.
Is any of it operable now?
I have one set of regulators, it's operable right now, it needs to be serviced, and there's no guarantee they're going to have the parts to service it.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I've got one more question. I guess going back to the situation that was several months ago in Lake Tillery, what did you do in that situation?
In that situation, I run sonar for, how many days, Sheriff? Was it a couple weeks? I think we averaged, I had squad was down there for several days running, eight hours a day running sonar, trying to locate it.
So you didn't have any divers at that point in time?
No, sir.
Any further questions?
I just want to say, I think during our workshops, when this came up, Commissioner LaHai, I believe, suggested and talked about maybe you guys working toward, the needs toward water rescue, and it looks like you addressed that issue and, you know, are heading to a lot of water, water rescues and for requests for funding for water rescues. So I appreciate you listening to what was suggested.
Thanks, sir.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, go ahead. I know we have $15,000 in contingency for this purpose. I would just make a motion that we do the $15,000 and add the extra foot to do four divers.
So your motion is for $16,266.72?
Correct.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second to that motion, Madam Chair.
Second to that motion, Madam Chair.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Let's see, we're missing two. The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board.
Thank you.
Mr. Will Hoyt, I'd just like to say, I appreciate everything you guys do.
Thanks, sir.
I believe our next item is Innovate North Carolina Grant.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Stanley Community College, the county, the city of Albemarle, the city of Locust, and the EDC are planning to collaborate on the submission of a grant aimed at accelerating the growth of an innovation economy in Stanley County. And I included some summary information about this grant. It's basically the NC State and Industrial Extension, the University of North Carolina, and some of their other partners are, are coming together on this grant. It's going to, grant will be awarded to five communities outside of Charlotte and the Triangle area. They, the thought process is there, the innovation's already occurring in those areas and that they don't need to spend limited resources in those, those more urban areas. And so the, the communities that will be selected will be outside of those areas. The technical assistance from this grant is valued at roughly $250,000. And it's a two-year project. The grant requires a $15,000 match. And so the thought process was to seek $7,500 of that match commitment from the county and then $3,750 from the city of Locust and the city of Albemarle. And the EDC Strategy Fund is, is a potential source of funding for this match requirement. So it won't require any additional appropriation from the county. It would just be required, if we were to be, if we were to be funded, then we would have to pay this $50. If we're not funded, if we don't get this grant, we don't spend this money. But the $7,500 could come from that EDC Strategy Fund. If, if, as a potential source, so the board doesn't have to appropriate any additional money to make this match occur. And so this grant is due August 16th. And so that's why this item has been brought before. And this just became a, an opportunity in the last week or two. So it took some time to get the partners together and get our heads together. This was something that we felt like the community could, could commit the resources. A two-year planning process, and they're talking about 25 to 30 folks in the community, not just representing government, but representing the private sector, forming an innovation council and meeting on, on at least a monthly basis. And then it does involve travel to Raleigh and other areas of the state that potentially would be funded by this, by this grant. So it's a huge commitment. And so, but the Community College is going to, is seeking to take the lead and apply. And so we're just looking to the local governments to help offset that match. And so I'll stop there and ask if there are any questions.
Madam Chair, not so much a question, but I talked with County Manager Lucas about this. And this seems to be one of those projects where the end result, it's going to be kind of hard to evaluate. But anytime we're talking about economic development for our county, I think we need to do what we can to hopefully boost that. Seems like a small price to pay. Even if we get funded, chances are we won't. And we do have funds in the EDC budget to cover this. But seems like an opportunity for us to hopefully do something good for our economy. I'd like to stress to the, to the public and the private sector, the leaders in our business community, that this is a commitment. And they'll have to get on board with this because there's going to be 25 to 30 people on this committee. And we don't want it to be all politicians because we know what can happen there. But want to make sure that our citizens get on board with this. Because if, if they're not committed to do these meetings, 25 or 30 people, that's quite a few business leaders to get together. So I would just encourage our business leaders, chambers of commerce, so forth, to get behind this if we decide to do it. But I would be in favor of this. And I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve this request.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion. Commissioner McIntyre, a second. Commissioner Shudo, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Thank you. Our next item is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. That concludes our business. And now is our public comment. And we have Mr. Joel Thomas, who would like to comment about selling ourselves.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was here last month, and I made some enemies with you guys. I'm Joel Thomas, the CEO of Oakbury Tractor. None of you would probably buy anything from me because now you don't like me. I don't know Mr. Lucas. He don't know me. But he would never do business with me. I'm trying to make a point, guys. I must want to be. I want to apologize to you. Except my apology is a certain. Thank you. Forgive me for using you last meeting. Richie Star is a great reporter. Mr. Dry is a lucky man to have him. Here's my point. You usually have 30 to 40 people here at your meeting. They sell tons of newspapers to everybody in this county. The only way people in this county know you is by what they report about you. Your management team, you throw each other under the bus. He's a great reporter. There's 18 companies wanting to come to Stanley County. They subscribe to the paper or they're on the internet. How do they find out about this management team? Through the paper, on the internet. Go back and look the past five to seven years between the county commissioners and the Board of Education. See how many positive articles you can find. I challenge you. People don't want to do business with negative people that threw each other, everybody under the bus. You're a management team, team, and you don't throw each other under the bus. If you have issues, and you should, if you're not having issues, something's wrong. Work them out. Don't call the paper. Because everybody in this county, that's what they see, is your issues. Not the good that you're doing for the county. Because good news don't sell. It's always bad. You can set some parameters about what can and can't be said. I know there's a freedom of speech thing. But Mr. Lucas works for y'all. Reason I said at the last meeting, Mr. Lucas wouldn't work for me is because I would never have an employee that would go out and bash my company. I would never have an employee that would go out and bash the county. You guys have got to sell the county. It's up to you. And what gets reported, because the people's, they're not going to come to your meeting. They read it in the paper. They read it on the internet. Now with that said, thank you for accepting my apology. You guys have done some same things that I did at the last meeting. You've made people mad that don't even know you just because of the way you act and the way you treat others. The way I treated Mr. Lucas at the last meeting, wrong, so wrong. And as Christians, we know that's wrong. But why can't your management team work together? And whatever comes out of your management team is positive. Whether it be Mr. Shudo selling 84 pairs of shoes in July and donating all that money to United Way. That's what it's all about, positive, positive energy. I thank you all for your service. I hope that we can keep Oakbury School open and Oakbury Library open. I hope y'all have some short-term goals and some long-term goals. Madam Chair, you're the leader. And I hope that you are focused on things that need to be done. And I'm sure you are. Not raising taxes for nine years. I'll hit on that too before I sit down. That's good to get elected, maybe, huh? But sometimes you just can't operate no further on what you have. And do you want the county to keep going backwards because they don't have funds to operate with? Now, Oakbury Tractor celebrates its 25th year. My last thing, I'll let you go. At the end of budget sessions, we always get orders in of department spending money, needing to spend money, whether it be $10,000 or a half billion dollars left in their budget. They have to clear it out before years in. So I hope eyes are on department heads to make sure that you don't have that kind of waste in this county here. Because I sure would love to see our schools stay open and some positive stuff put in the paper. Thank you for the good job you do. And if I can ever help any of you, call upon me. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll begin with Commissioner Shudo.
I just want to say, I got back to my workdays. It was a busy spring, I just wasn't able to do it. And I kind of miss getting out there and connecting with the employees in Stanley County. They go out there, do a great job. I worked with the Home Health Agency for a day, Debbie Bailey, he's got a good staff. Worked with them on a Monday morning. They always meet first thing Monday morning, they go over what happened over the weekend because they have to have a nurse working over the weekend because healthcare doesn't stop because it's Saturday, Sunday, or a holiday. And I don't want to say much about working with them because a lot of that is patient private information. But we did go on, on house calls and it was very professional staff down there. And then also at the Senior Center, they had their 90-plus birthday party. And we have, there were 107 90-plus-year-old people that were at that, at that birthday party. And most of them are still living at home. And a lot of them are still living on their own. For you guys out there, you get to be over 90, there's not going to be a lot of us. There was 14 guys and 93 women at that, yeah. So if a guy was there looking for a date, he had a pretty good odds that night. I said that to them, they appreciated it. But I think there were nine that were over, nine centarians that were over 100 years old. But it's a good test, a testament to the longevity of our lives. I tell you what, I'm 56, it's kind of scary looking ahead, knowing that 34 years from now, if I live that long, I'll be 90 years old. That's a long time forward. But anyway, what, what Becky did, Becky Weenhoff did over there, she did a great job of a partnership between tax dollars and corporate sponsors. She used $100 budget from the, from Stanley County taxpayers to put that party together. And there's about 200 people there because, you know, the, the 90-year-old pluses had guests. And she got, I think it was $1,600 worth of corporate sponsorships to put the party together. So it's one of the best events of the year at the Senior Center.
Thank you, Commissioner Burleson.
I'd just like to say, last Friday, I had the opportunity to travel over to the edge of Moore County and Montgomery County. The Department of Corrections is opening up a training facility over there. It's 440 acres at Samarcan. And I just thought it was interesting that the state has decided to put something so close to Stanley County. A lot of people will be traveling into Stanley County and Montgomery County because Albemarle's probably one of the best places to stay within decent driving distance to the facility, other than going down to possibly Pinehurst or somewhere where it's pretty expensive. It was just a, a great day and finished up the day by going up and touring the Tar Hill Challenge Academy. Those folks have really got everything coming together and getting ready for students here in another month or so. And it sounds like we're going to have a ribbon cutting probably middle of next month up there. So just thought I would update on everyone. Stuff's coming together at New London. Thanks.
Commissioner McIntyre.
I'm not sure I should say this, but Commissioner Efer wanted to know if I went to the 90 celebration. But not quite. But thanks for, that's the only comment I've got.
Commissioner Efer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Economic development wise, I'll be attending the 2015 North Carolina Aerospace Suppliers and Advanced Manufacturing Summit this Thursday with Paul Stratus and Bill's absent. Looking forward to that. Hopefully we can get some, some business there to come to our airport. Mr. Thomas, thank you very much for your comments and congratulations on your 25th year. I was in your store Saturday. And, you know, if I make it till tomorrow, I'll be married 36 years. Me and my wife don't agree on everything. But hopefully at the end of tonight, she lets me come in the house. But I appreciate that. And Commissioner Shudo, if you make it 34 more years, you got a party waiting on you. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Gentlemen, we have a closed session. Do we have a motion to recess?
Madam Chair, make a motion to recess, to close session.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. If anybody needs a bathroom break, take it.